Sorry.
Thank you. How'd you see that?
Good job.
Pat, number one, legal notice?
Morning, everybody. Number one is the notice for Bridge Inspection Services for the Lansdowne Boulevard and Early Road Bridge Replacement Projects, and both of these bridges are within the city of Youngstown.
Very good. Thank you. O M B Grants?
Good morning, Commissioners. This is a notice of hearing for public hearing number one for the Mahoning County Fiscal Year 2024 Community Development Block Grant. It will be held Thursday, March 21st, 2024 at 9:00 a.m. in the Commissioner's Hearing Room. That will also include the CHIP program.
Thank you. Thank you, Anna.
Thank you.
Motion to approve legal notices, one and two. Second roll call?
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficani?
Yes. Journal entry number one. Motion to approve journal entries, number one. Second roll call?
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficani?
Yes. We have agreements, letters A through I, and we'll begin with letter A. Convention and Visitors Bureau, Linda?
Good morning, everyone. Letter A is an agreement with Travel Boards for literature distribution across all service plazas on the Ohio Turnpike. Travel Boards handles all of this, as well as advertising along the turnpike. This is a two-yeared agreement in the amount of $3,591 non-general.
Very good. Thank you. E M A? Robin Lees, our director. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners, everybody. This is an annual contract with B and J Electric to service our emergency sirens. This is for one year for $50,000.
Thank you, Robin. And Engineers, C, D, Pat?
Commissioners, letter C is an agreement with Gobles Towing and Recovery. This is for towing and recovery services on an as-needed basis in the estimated amount of $2,500 non-general funds. And letter D is an agreement with Jeswal Auto Truck Service for towing and recovery services on an as-needed basis in the estimated amount of $3,000, also non-general funds.
Thank you, sir. Facilities, Alan?
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
E is an agreement with A and M Door and Supply Company to install a stairwell exit door, unit, the side light, and door at the Justice Center in the amount of $5,950 general.
Thank you. And Lead, Phil Purrier?
Good morning, Commissioners. F is an agreement with American Pinnacle Construction for Lit House Control and Healthy Homes Work at 2736 Hudson in the amount of $37,225 non-general.
Okay, thank you. And Recycling, G and H?
Morning, Commissioners. Item G is our agreement with Lamar Advertising to erect five billboards for Earth Day promotion. The billboards will be designed by students in grades. I believe it's I think it's K through five on this one. The next one's going to be our agreement with Serva Solutions. Serva Solutions is our vendor contractor that handles all of our dry cell battery recycling.
Okay, thank you. And Sanitary, Pat?
Commissioners, letter I is an agreement with Baird's Tree Service. This is to provide tree removal services at the North Lima Road project, which is in Poland, Ohio, and the Rose Lawn Baird Street project, which is the Rose Lawn Pump Station Replacement, which is in Lake Milton, in the amount of $49,000. These are non-general funds.
Okay. Thank you. Motion to approve agreements, A through I? Motion to approve agreements, A through I. Second roll call?
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficani?
Yes. Change orders, A, B, and C. We'll begin with Lead, Phil Purrier.
A is a change order, number one, with Direct Industrial Service and Supply LLC for CHIP rehab work at 320 Oakview Avenue in the amount of $2,800 non-general.
Thank you, sir. And B and C, Pat Genetti, Sanitary.
Commissioners, letter B is change order, number one, with Joe Dickey Electric. This is for the Boardman and Camel Wastewater Treatment Plant Emergency Generators, which is improvement number 533 in the amount of $43,952.78. These are non-general funds. And letter C is change order, number one and final, with United Survey. This is for the Menlothian Glenwood Area Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project, which is improvement number 540, and this resulted in a decreased amount of $43,375, also non-general funds.
Thank you. Motion to approve? Motion to approve change orders, A through C. Second roll call?
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficani?
Yes. Moving on, road closings, number four. Letters A and B, Pat, Engineers?
Commissioners, letter A is to close approximately 22 roads beginning March 1st, 2024 through December 2024. This is for various culvert replacements as part of the 2024 OPWC and locally funded paving program, which will occur next year. And letter B is to close Western Reserve Road east of Glenwood Avenue from March 12th to the 14th to complete waterline installation as part of the Western Reserve Road Widening Project Part One.
Very good. Lot going on, Pat, and great job yesterday at the seminar you had for the townships.
Thank you. Glad both of you were able to make it.
Absolutely. Learned a lot. Motion to approve road closings, A and B. Second roll call?
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficani?
Yes. Okay, five A appointments. Commissioners will appoint the following person who will be serving on the Mahoning County Children's Services Board effective January 1st, 2024, for four years, and that is none other than Reverend Dr. Lewis W. Macklin II. Motion to approve appointments, A. Second roll call?
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficani?
Yes. Motion to approve resolutions? Motion to approve resolutions additions. Second roll call?
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficani?
Yes. Record of bids, A and B, Engineers, Pat?
Commissioners, letter A is the record of bids for the Lansdowne Boulevard Bridge Replacement Project.
Okay. And Facilities, Alan?
B is the Mahoning County Courthouse Chilled Water System and Upgrades and Alterations Project.
Very good. Dave? Okay. Motion to approve record of bids, A and B. Second roll call?
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficani?
Yes. Resolutions, we're going to begin with letter A. Today is a special day, and this resolution that we're going to be doing is recognizing the partnership of Mahoning County Mental Health and Recovery Board, Mahoning County Public Health Department, and the Direction Home of Eastern Ohio, all who are in attendance today, dedicating March 1st, 2024, as Suicide Awareness and Prevention Day. And we have some wonderful people here who are going to be speaking and telling us all the variables involved and what's going on with respect to suicide and what we could do and what we can't do and what we should do. So with that being said, I am going to call Dwayne Pitcherelli. The police come forward. Dwayne, the floor is yours.
And I think Ryan.
Sure. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So after. Yeah, bring everyone down. Joe, Ryan, how are you?
Good, good.
Good to see you guys.
First, I want to thank Audrey and your staff, because I asked to do this and they put it right into motion. And we wish it was a happier event, but if you remember, in December, we did a call to action because we saw that number of suicides in Mahoning County increasing. And all the suicides, anyone's death is a tragedy, and we focus on it. But we're seeing a trend with older men, and so we had a call to action. But that call to action prior to Christmas, we still had four more people complete to take their lives between that day and January 1st. And what we're seeing now is between January 1st and today, we've had eight people take their lives. And about 33% of them are men. And that's about three, that's three more than we've had the previous year at this time. So we're very concerned. And the reason we wanted to do this today was in the spring, April and May especially, suicides skyrocket. That's when internationally, people take their lives at a higher rate. And so at the trend we're going, we're very concerned. So, you know, the Mental Health Board, Mental Health Recovery Board, we talked, we have a plan of action. We have a suicide prevention group, but it's too big of a problem for us to handle ourselves. So we want to focus on gatekeeper training. But, you know, I called on my two colleagues here from the Public Health Department and from Direction Homes, because we need their help. Like I said, it's a much bigger problem than we have. I do want to say that we're blessed in Mahoning County because our elected officials and everyone's working together on this. And our Department of Mental Health in Ohio, they're really focusing on 988 and they're providing support to us. But it's a serious issue. We have to address it, and hopefully, we're going to reduce the number of people taking their lives. Because I say all the time, suicide has nothing to do with dying. It has to do with pain. And the one thing we say at the Mental Health Recovery Board is, mental health care is health care. And, you know, people sometimes, suicide's still the great taboo. We got to start talking about it. We got to start the conversation. So I've talked enough. I'm going to let my two colleagues talk. I don't know if you want to go on. I order.
We were going, but who has the least hair goes last. Good morning, Commissioners. How are you today? As Dwayne said, you know, it's a growing number of residents in Mahoning County are taking their own lives. What we've seen is the number of older adults doing it, and more and more seniors are and seniors for today, we're going to say 50, because some of us are there, and beyond that, are taking their lives. So Direction Home, we pledge our support to work with both Ryan and Dwayne on this issue. Direction Home will continue to train our staff. We continually do this on recognizing suicide. We're also going to provide training for our provider network to ensure that they can recognize those signs also. Direction Home will be providing 988 information to our home-delivered meal clients, our get-out-and-dine clients, and to the levy participants. So we're looking at well over 2,000 individuals we'll be sending a direct mail or two as we work through this process. We just, we see that this is a serious issue, and we're going to take a serious stance on this. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this morning, and I'll turn it over to you, Ryan.
Well, keep it very brief. Once again, I want to thank the county commissioners for allowing us to come here and talk. You're probably wondering, why is public health at the table? Anytime that you hear about a public health crisis, the reason why we come to the table is public health are the conveners. We may not be the experts in that area, but what we try to do is bring the agencies together, those who are the experts, to talk about that topic, and then come up with those strategies that are developed through the partnerships to address the issue. About a week ago, I was at a leadership meeting, and I heard an individual just talking about going back to the steel mill days, and they were talking about when men were men. And I was like, well, what does that mean? As we're sitting there talking, and we know that we have a disparity with men that are at the age of 70, we need to realize that it's okay for us guys that are in the room right now, that if we're having a hard time, ask for help. It's okay to ask for help. And I think that's what we need to understand. So from the public health standpoint, we'll continue to work with the community partners. We will bring agencies together. We'll learn from the experts. And we want to keep this topic going. I know we have the media here today, and we want to rely on the media to also spread that message. So we thank the media that's in the room as well. Thank you and appreciate it.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, gentlemen. Get your team and staff. Do you have any staff people here before you sit down?
Staff of the Mental Health Board. Stand up and one of our.
Recognize them.
Ruth Mastriann.
We know.
And Ruth Mastriann is one of our board members, as long as I do question this.
Okay.
There's a couple.
Sure.
He's got it. Anthony, you have other names. That's what he's looking for.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Now I'm going to call our state representative up and our good friend, Lauren McNally. She's the only one that comes. Joe, we thought you were going to introduce your staff, too. Then you jumped in front of Anthony. Yeah. And so is there anyone from your staff?
Sandra Valentini.
Please stand up. Stand up! He should have been up there. Sandra Hups.
I tried to get her to do it.
Ryan, any?
Just me today.
Nobody would come with you, huh? I can understand. He left the Steelers jacket to Carbo. Okay.
Yeah, I just, the state's invested significantly in mental health from children on up in our last budget cycle and the operating budget, hundreds of millions of dollars. The governor has made it very clear that mental health is something that he feels passionate about, and he put his money where his mouth is in this last budget cycle. And so that was really good to see. But there's still a lot of work to be done, and the coordination between what you guys do on the ground here, me being able to be a part of that here, and then take that back to the state, whether it's through my seat on Ohio's Commission on Aging, which I know that we just had a meeting locally about the mental health of the elderly, and me being able to take that information back to that commission, where that's where we develop our policies at the state level. And that's where we have representatives from all over the state coming together to talk about those types of issues. And so I've already started that conversation. It's on their radar. And so that's something that we'll be continuing to talk about at our meetings there. But also, just 988. I use that service when people call my office. And so I know how valuable funding things like that, those programs are at the local level, because constituents need those services. And it's more than just, more than just mental health when it comes to a service like 988, too. And so there's a lot of programs that we need to continue to build up, and we need to continue to create even, to solve for some of the problems that our residents are facing, that are really affecting their quality of life. And so I'm excited to, just like you said, how we all have to work together towards it. And we have a good relationship here with you guys and you guys and you guys and all the people in the room, and just funneling that message up and what is needed. So I'm appreciative of you guys, including me, in the things that you guys are doing here, so that I can take that back and be the advocate that we need down at the State House for that. So thank you. I also just, for being here, I now have a whole bunch of information to send you on the issue that Mr. Repovi brought up. So I'll send you that after the meeting on the electric bill stuff, because there's movement on that as well. And then I do have another email that you guys got this morning that has to do with JFS. So I'll follow up with you guys later on that, too.
Okay. Thank you, Lauren. Thank you very much. Okay, Prosecutor Gina DiGenova, she's not here. Anybody from? Moving on, we will ask Angela DeVito, Coalition for Drug-Free Mahoning County. Angela, come on up.
Thank you, Commissioners. Need to send Dwayne a memo to have a stepstool up here for me.
I know the feeling.
I'm so grateful to be here, Commissioners, and that's a sentiment that we'd really like every member of our community to be able to feel, that they're grateful to be alive. And in partnership with the Mental Health and Recovery Board, we've been able to bring a program called QPR to Mahoning County. And QPR stands for Question, Persuade, Refer. And the nice thing about QPR is that you don't have to be a licensed clinician in order to do question, persuade, and refer for somebody who is either in emerging mental health crisis or are at the brink of suicide. QPR is a 60-minute training, and we've got about 20 trainers here in Mahoning County. Again, that was funding through the Mental Health and Recovery Board a few years ago that made that possible. And an organization can reach out to me at the Coalition for Drug-Free Mahoning County or reach out to the Mental Health and Recovery Board, and we can connect their group with a training to become QPR-qualified. And all that means is that you understand the warning signs of suicide. You understand how to ask somebody the important questions. Are you considering killing yourself? And how to refer them to services. And our booklets that go home with every single one of our QPR-trained persons have the resources right on the back. And there's a tear card they can put in their wallet. It's a free one-hour training. We encourage as many people and organizations as possible to take advantage of this. If I may equate it to CPR, you are not going to become a diagnostician when you get this training. Much like, pardon me, someone who is CPR-trained, keep someone alive until qualified help can help them. The same with QPR. Someone who's trained can help keep someone alive until they make that connection with the referral and get qualified clinical help.
Very, very good. It's important. Maybe the media will pick up on that, let them know about the free training. Thank you very, very much.
I've got contact information for the media.
Good.
Thank you.
That is great news. And then we will ask for Lee DeVito, Mahoning County Mental Health Recovery Board. Lee?
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having me. Let me speak. Just to talk on some other steps that the Mental Health and Recovery Board's taken on the post-vention side. We recently applied for a mini-grant with the Ohio Suicide Prevention Foundation, and hopes if we receive that grant is to train two to three individuals with one of our partnering agencies to provide support groups for individuals who've lost someone to suicide. Unfortunately, we don't have anyone doing a support group right now in Mahoning County. So this will be an important tool that we can add for individuals to, you know, get some supports that they need. And then we also have, which has been ongoing, is our loss team that continues to provide support for those individuals who've lost someone to suicide. And I have some materials on that. So those are just two additional things that we've been doing at the board to, you know, on the post-vention side and to help with the, you know, suicide losses that we're seeing. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Well, with that being said, before we move on, I should, in fact, read this resolution since we're proclamating today is Suicide Awareness and Prevention. This is Resolution 24 by the Mahoning County Commissioners. All Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives. Suicide deaths are increasing not only in Mahoning County, but throughout the United States. Since 2021, there has been an increase of suicide deaths reported in Mahoning County, including a rise in suicide deaths in adults aged 60 and older. Whereas Mahoning County Mental Health and Recovery Board, Mahoning County Public Health, and the Direction Home of Eastern Ohio, along with each business school, government agency, faith-based organization, healthcare providers, and citizens has responsibility to promote awareness and support preventive efforts in regards to suicide deaths. Promotion and prevention efforts are effective ways to reduce suicide deaths. Now it be resolved that the Board of Mahoning County Commissioners do hereby recognize the partnership with the Mahoning County Mental Health and Recovery Board, Mahoning County Public Health, and the Direction Home of Eastern Ohio to address the rise of suicide deaths in Mahoning County. Be it resolved today that the Board of Mahoning County Commissioners does hereby dedicate March 1st, 2024, as Suicide Awareness and Prevention Day in Mahoning County. And we call upon all of our citizens, our government agencies, healthcare providers, faith-based organizations, public and private institutes, businesses and schools, to commit our community to increasing awareness and understanding the risk of suicide. So we thank all of you for what you're doing and what you're trying to do to, that we can prevent this and give somebody some hope as opposed to taking their lives. Dave? Yeah, just that one thing. Sure. You know, we all, you know, have friends, close friends, acquaintances, family members. And we all have the ability to interact. And I know like Angela said, that, you know, there's training that we can get to look for signs. And sometimes they're so difficult to see, you know, because when you see people, when you hear of someone that committed suicide, you think, oh, they had mental illness, they were on drugs, you know, they were sick, they were going to die, they this, they that. You know, there's a lot of things to justify what happens or to try to justify in your own mind. But when people commit suicide, and I know personally that depression is like a broken arm. You need to help them get help, you know, and sometimes we don't realize that. But I've had, you know, and I was just sitting here listening to the professionals out there that deal with things. And, you know, we interact from a government standpoint, like with 988, and different things that we can do. But, you know, I've had three friends that I just wrote their names down, and one of them committed suicide probably about 15 years ago. And a professional that lost his job, got depressed, started drinking, wife left him, you know, and ended up taking his life. And I saw him a week before, and I thought, I got to call him up. We got to get together. We got to talk. We got to help, you know, and it didn't happen. And, you know, there's probably about 10 years ago, a young, and he was 50 years old, that committed suicide. And there was a younger guy about 10 years ago that used to come and help me when I had work to do, and just a great kid. Got into an argument with his wife, came home and committed suicide. He was 30, with a daughter that was like eight or nine years old. And, you know, and just recently, you know, we've had someone that we both know that worked for the county, that was in his 40s and, you know, and committed suicide. And so it's not that person that you think it is. It's the people you interact with every day. It's the people you talk to. It's the people you, you know, maybe do business with or interact with. And, you know, so it's really important. And I'd love to, you know, be trained better, you know, in trying to see warning signs. But, you know, I've had a couple of friends that have had nervous breakdowns and, you know, gone into depression that are doing great today, you know, because once you come to the realization that a lot of the depression issues that you're having, there's help for, you know, and it's just like treating a broken arm. You know, you've got to seek out the help. And I think it takes all of us in this room and friends and family and everyone to bring that to the table and to surface that type of approach. You know, because nobody really, you know, wants to confront people that are, that may be at that point in their life, you know, and you just don't know how close someone is to that edge, you know. So really, it behooves everybody to interact and try to help people if they have the slightest inclination, you know. So hopefully, you know, we all have the opportunity to get better trained. So thank you so much for all the hard work that all of you do, because it's important. You know, and I was a little bit, Dwayne, on your numbers, you said eight and about 33% were men. So did it mean that the 70% were women that committed suicide?
It's the opposite.
Oh, okay. It was 70% were men. Okay. All right. Thank you. No, thanks, Dave. And you know what? I had a friend that lost his business. He was 42 years old and happened during COVID. And this person had a great business, and I've known him a long time and actually helped him a little bit. He had started years ago in the business. He had three kids and lost everything. Went into the bathroom, stuck a needle in his arm, and that was the end of it. And it's tragic, you know, and we always try to, I always try to look at it from the point of scripture. You know, where there's darkness, we got to show people the light. When you see the light, you go into the light, things open up a lot better. But if you're constantly looking at darkness, it's heck to get out of that. That dark is no good. So if we could put a little light into somebody's lives, they may see the end of the tunnel. So I appreciate all what you do. And it's a very serious topic. So thank you for your remarks and what you're doing for us. Okay, letter B. Audrey, did you have anything you want to say?
No, you go ahead.
Are you sure?
Yes, sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, letter B. Resolution approving the First Lease Amendment with Person Centered Services, Active Day Ohio, Inc., Active Day, Inc., and ADSC Holidays, Inc. for 153 Javits Court, Austintown, in accordance with ORC 307.09A and 307.10A. Letter C, Commissioners, Resolution approving the following voucher per ORC 570541, per the amount in department. And that is for Jane Desimone, $2,450.71, JFS/Child Support Division. Letter D, Commissioners, O M B?
Morning. This is a resolution to transfer support.
This is a resolution to transfer support $160,000 from the General Fund to the Lead Hazard Control Fund for, um, support of their grant.
Thank you. Coroner's Office? Anyone from the Coroner's Office? It's all you. Okay. I'll do that. Resolution, uh, declaring a surplus vehicle, uh, it's a 2013 Ford Focus, and authorizing the transfer to the Board of Elections in accordance with ORC 307.12. Letter D. Letter F, EMA. Robin?
Good morning again, commissioners. Uh, as you know, this is an ongoing project we've been working on. It's finally come to a conclusion. This is to replace the mobile command post. Uh, this is a, uh, agreement with MBF Industries for the replacement, which is 698, 300, or 698,398 dollars. Um, and this is from the American Rescue Funds. Uh, Commissioners approved that actually last year. We've been working with the vendors, uh, for some time over this and working out the details. Uh, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that Adam Garrery did a lot of that technical aspects of it. And getting it here today, uh, Jim Fortunato and Nancy and Holly and everybody worked to get it on the agenda so we could move this forward, uh, with the vendor and appreciate that.
And Robin, I remember you telling us that this isn't something you go into a showroom and pick out. You've gotta spec it out and have it set up for what the professionals want, correct?
Absolutely. This has been a process and the build period is gonna be between 18 and 24 months. Uh, so it'll be a process. The, uh, the advantages to this is the, the former unit, which again is over 20 years old, um, is on an RV frame and setup. It's a modified recreational vehicle. This will actually be on a commercial truck frame, a freight liner. And, uh, again, you know, we're 20 years moving forward with all the technology associated with that. And we're kind of excited about seeing this come to fruition.
Arpa money. Thank you. Audrey, did you want to?
I just wanted to say that this is part of the Commissioners' Arpa allocations and those funds are paying for this vehicle.
Very good. Safety for the community. Absolutely. Okay, G and H, uh, letter G, Human Resources, Karen?
Good morning, commissioners. This is a resolution to approve a non-disclosure agreement with Medical Mutual of Ohio. MMO administrates our employee health benefits program. And on an annual basis, they release very specific information to the state of Ohio auditors for our yearly audit. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. And last but not least, sanitary. Pat?
Commissioners, letter H is a resolution authorizing the disposal of scrap with a value less than $2,500. This is per Ohio Revised Code 307.12B1.
Okay. All right, a motion to approve resolutions A through H.
Second roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficant?
Yes. And for the good of the order, you know, I just wanted to say that, you know, I wish Carol was here today because this suicide prevention awareness was something that, you know, she was really big on. And I'm sure if she was here, she would have some comments. So wish Carol was here today, but I'm sure she'll, she'll know what went on here today and be happy with that. Okay, any elected officials or department heads care to comment? Anybody?
I'd like...
Audrey?
I don't see many hands up there. No. Um, I just wanna say how, how, um, lucky our county is as far as our departments and their ability to work together. Direction Home, Mental Health, and Board of Health have worked together on other projects and other things for the citizens of Mahoney County. And even in all of our other departments, I, there is a good working relationship. And it helps services get done. And, you know, the Commissioners' willingness to support these agencies and to make sure that they have the tools and the funding to do what they do, and the citizens who have voted on levies for them, um, who have supported them that way, have also understood the importance of what they do. So I do want to commend the Commissioners, the residents and everyone so that we can address these issues and be upfront with them.
Good point, Audrey. Thank you. Does anyone on the screen want to say anything? Anybody? No? Okay. Dave?
Yeah, no, I just, uh, reiterate, I wanna thank everybody for, you know, the, the, uh, the hard work that you do on a daily basis because I know that in, in the departments that are represented here, uh, for the county, that you deal with issues on a daily basis, you know. Maybe not to the extent of suicide, but, you know, everything that you do, you know, whether it's, you know, Direction Home, the Mental Health Board, or, um, whether, uh, the Coalition for Drug-Free America, um, the, the things that you do, um, are helping people, you know, and, and trying to make us all a, a better community. And, and we're much richer for all of that here in Mahoney County. So I, I really thank you all, uh, first and foremost. Uh, next, I, I, I'd be remiss if I didn't, uh, also take Audrey's spot here and promote the, uh, the, uh, renewal of our, uh, justice sales tax that is on the ballot in March. It is a renewal. I know we're all mad about, uh, you know, my property taxes going up. But the things that we get the opportunity to vote on are the things that help us the most. You know, uh, I know Lauren would be on our side if, uh, she could help us reduce the 5.750 sales tax that the state of Ohio takes from us every day. Uh, but the 1.2, 1.5 that comes back to Mahoney County operates all of, uh, Mahoney County government. So, you know, and when I say that, um, you know, there's 1,400 employees, there's 31 elected official, full-time employees, there's 31 elected officials actually in the county when you count all the judges. Uh, and there's 125 part-time employees, 47 departments, 17 of which report to the Commissioners. Uh, and there's 25 contracts that are negotiated. So, um, all collectively, that group of individuals, a lot of us right here in this room, uh, provide the services to the residents of Mahoney County, 240,000. And that 1.5% that goes to the county is a quarter of a percent. We voted on for roads, three quarters of a penny that goes to the Justice Fund, and a half a penny that goes to the General Fund to run the other departments. So everything that, that you have, you voted on locally. And this one is reaffirming that the sheriff, which this is 82% of the sheriff's budget, this renewal. So it isn't just important, it's critical, you know. So if any of us lose 82% of our budget, you know, it's gonna be pretty difficult to keep jail open, keep the deputies protecting the health, safety, and welfare of the county. So all of those things go hand in hand with, you know, being progressive and being able to do programs and being proactive instead of reactive. So, um, we, it's not a political issue. It's not a Democrat or Republican issue. It's Mahoney County taking care of Mahoney County. So, uh, all the money, we've been acknowledged for being one of the most transparent counties in the state of Ohio in the work that we show and, and put online for you to see and you, you to look at. So hopefully it's an, an easy yes, uh, for the justice tax renewal that keeps the sheriff running. So I, uh, ask for your support on that.
Thank you, Dave. And I'll echo that. And, you know, we've been out there, a campaign trail, and we've been, you know, talking to the public about the importance of that. And I think we all reduce it down to the fact that, you know, it's the cost of doing business. Uh, we're mandated to be in the jail business, unfortunately. And we have some bad actors in society that have to be dealt with. So imagine if you didn't have that system in place. Imagine if we did not have our social workers, our counselors, our agencies. Has problems gotten worse or have they gotten better? So if you remove that aspect out of it, it will increase expeditiously. So you are on the front lines, we're on the front lines, trying to keep some type of sanity, uh, in this community and get people help. And we're not out there asking for anything more than what we normally get. But there's a huge cost, uh, to crime, uh, in this community. Unfortunately, we still deal with a high crime rate and a low tax base. And that's been something, you know, that we've tried to juxtapose with respects to how the economy is. You know, you have those upheavals, but yet Mahoney County has remained very, we've been static. I mean, we have rode out some storms and we're just asking you to consider the importance of the criminal justice tax that, that we have. And Dave does a great job, uh, when he does a presentation doing that. And I wanna thank all of you here in your agencies and your staff for trying to save lives. Uh, that's something nobody can, can argue about for anything. So thank, thank you all for that. Okay, Holly, when's our next meeting?
Uh, Thursday, March 7th, 2024, at 10:00 AM.
March 7th. Already March. Is today March 1st?
Today's leap year.
One more day.
You guys forgot.
Yes, today is leap year.
Leap year. I'm gonna leap.
Oh, my, I have a...
I'm gonna jump.
I have a friend of mine, Joe Castor, in Trumbull County that I worked with for a lot of years. He was born on Leap Day, Leap Year. And, uh, so he always says that, I think he's the same age as me, so today he'll be about 16, I think. You know? So what, what is it that people do on, that, that are born on Leap Day? They just, their birthday's March 1st for three, four years and then it's, you know, then it's February 20.
20.
Is it 28, 29?
Goes back.
Yeah, 29. Too funny. Okay.
All right. A motion to adjourn. Okay, second roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficant?
Yes. Thank you, everybody.